Okay. There we go. Oh, man. I think y'all already know. It's the hottest show in social media history. It's the war zone. And I am the five star general. We got me a new co-host. Let's see if we can go hard in the paint. Demetri Koltz. Some other people. We're about to give it to you, man. We're in the middle of the war zone. We're about to go in, bro. I want to say top of the evening to you. I ain't want that intro to go in too long. I want to say top of the evening to all of y'all. I appreciate y'all tuning in. And y'all forgive my voice. I do not have the coronavirus. I just been talking crazy for the last three days. You feel what I'm saying? So at the end of the day, we gonna make it through this thing. I want to introduce y'all to my new co-host, Demetri Koltz. And Carlos Anderson is taking the night off. Not feeling well because it's that, you know, we dealing with a lot right now as far as our medical side of us and, and, and we got to, uh, take care of ourselves. So Carlos will be back. But tonight, Demetri is here and she go hard. I mean, she just go hard. Introduce yourself, mama. Let them know you.
And I am actually the host of the Demetri K Show that, uh, comes on 3:00 PM Pacific Standard Time. Uh, so here in Southern California, also host another show with, uh, my partner Donovan Siddique. It's called Free Flow Fridays. We do that on Friday afternoons where, uh, we talk about eating and everything that goes on in the black community to make us an even better people. And, um, I also, um, have a YouTube channel, um, named Demetri K. So also, um, I, I have a background and career in public relations among a whole host of other things, but I'll just leave it at that for now.
That's cool. That's cool. Uh, we will have our guest coming on there to push back 30 minutes. So that is, uh, city councilwoman at large, Letitia Plummer. A great fabulous person right now. She, she is out there in the community doing pop-up. I mean, like pop-up, uh, restaurants just to help feed people that don't get a hot meal. And you don't see very, very many city council people doing stuff like that. So she is a fabulous, fabulous person and she will be on a little bit later. I see my good friend Nitro Derrick Booker just jumped in. I mentioned your daughter earlier, Lele. And some people just lost it. We gotta get Lele on the show, Dee. So I'mma call you when I get through and we gonna get Lele on this show. Um. I think we can go in for a little bit. You know, you've been watching some of the stuff that's been going on with the splitting up of the shows and different things. And it's okay if you can't work together. You know, it's, it's all right if you, if you just can't work together. But the reason that we do this stuff is to bring, not just to create awareness. I hate when people say, oh, I'm trying to make people aware. Okay, I don't care not being aware. You know, I know it's dope in the community. So why you keep telling me about it? What we gonna do to fix the problem? So I like, I like fixing problems. And, uh, we do these shows to bring awareness and create solutions to the problems that we have. But amongst the split that we had with the other co-hosts, which was cool. The reasons as to why you watched that show that night where we were trying to hold people accountable. And, uh, that show kind of went sideways. And, uh, ever since then, it's been a bunch of drama. I really can't do the drama. You know, I've been, I done got maybe 300 phone calls in three days on, in reference to this foolishness. And I've been accused of, uh, being paid by a candidate to bring up issues with another candidate, which is not true. Um, when I found out the candidate has some improprieties as far as dealing with money and actually went to prison for it, which I didn't know that was a problem for me because it dealt with a school district. And I fight for school kids every day. So you tell me, I'mma give you the flow first. Based on what you saw. Are we in the right business of trying to hold these people accountable?
Well, um, I did see everything, uh, for the most part because I don't live in Houston. But I did see, um, what unfolded over the last week or so. Um, I specifically, I watched the show uh, that all three of you, when I say all three of you, you and your two, uh, ex-co-hosts, I guess you call them now. Uh, we're trying to hold, um, a candidate, I guess she is by the name of Cynthia Bailey accountable. Um, due to some things that she had in the past, specifically, she's, I guess, a felon. She, uh, was in somewhat, uh, I guess, an embezzlement ring or something where they've embezzled almost $300,000 from, um, a school. And so you, from what I see, this is me, I, you know, because I don't have a dog in the fight. But from what I saw, you were actually trying to, um, hold her accountable. He was also kind of like in the middle. He was playing the middle ground. Then, um, Ms. Matthews, she was kind of having a hard time. Owning up to, um, what the lady had done. She didn't want to say she would vote for her. She wouldn't vote for her. So as for everybody who saw the show, it was pretty heated. Um, and then so also watched the schism that took place between you all, uh, basically guys breaking up. I had an opportunity, uh, to go over and watch the new show that they have. Um, and they completely did a 360. Did a 360 as far as, you know, yes, I would vote for her. You know, I'm sorry, we didn't stand up for her, that kind of thing. And, um, and as I said on the show, the first show that, uh, Candace especially, you know, not to, you know, cause any drama, she lost all credibility. Because we're in the business of holding people accountable. And it sounds like that's what you guys were doing, you know, on your, uh, original format. You were trying to hold people accountable, talking about different elected officials and things like that. But when it came to this specific person, um, Cynthia Bailey was, well, I don't know yet. I don't want to see. And you know, she took the money, but she took the money to help the kids. And then to your point, you're saying, yeah, but she took some money from the kids. You know, to quote unquote, help the kids. And she kept on arguing, well, it was a Robin Hood type of thing. And depending on how you see Robin Hood, some people will still say he was a bad person for, you know, robbing the rich, um, to giving to the poor because he still was taking something that didn't belong to him. Now, on the other side, yeah, people say, well, the rich have enough already. It's, it's a noble thing to steal from the rich to help the poor. But the point you were making, um, was regardless of who was rich and who was poor, uh, kids were hurt in the process. And so, um, you're supposed to hold people accountable. If that's what you do, if you hold any type of, uh, public stance on, on holding people's feet to the fire, then yeah. You gotta hold everybody's feet to the fire. Now, from what my opinion, as I said, I'm in public relations, so I have a different eye. Um, it appears to me that a couple of people on the panel, um, not including yourself, um, maybe had some invested interest, if you will. I'm not saying they took money, but there was definitely something going on, you know, because um, if you're in journalism and let's face it, most people who have some sort of a social media platform, they're in journalism. Whether you've gone to school or not, um, your integrity is on the line. And you may often have to talk about people who you're very good friends with. But you have to ask yourself, well, do I not tell the truth because we're friends? Or do I do my job anyway? And, you know, just let it, put it all on the table and let everybody else decide. That's what you truly call fair and balanced. So yes, you're supposed to hold people accountable regardless.
I think as an African American, the one thing I would tell people is I've always had a platform. It took seven, eight years to build my platform. And that's how I met you. I mean, you in California, I'm in Texas. And I can reach, I can reach Cali, New York, whatever. And I think from the first day that you've ever watched me, I've been holding people accountable. And, and whether it's school officials, public officials, doesn't matter. I believe that these people are vampires and they're sucking the blood out of the African American community. They, they just drained us to the point that we have nothing. And, and, and now to be able to sit back and have a, you know, a different type of platform because I have a platform. And you specifically hold them accountable. And sit next to two people who you trust, you're supposed to trust. And even though they sit in their house, I say we sit next to each other. And we're supposed to hold them accountable. And then all of a sudden, it goes left. It goes left. And you know, the thing is, do I know Cynthia Bailey personally? No, I don't. She may be a fabulous person. You may have gotten out of jail and you may have done a lot of great things since you got out. But I don't believe with three felonies on your back and all of them money related, I don't give you this, the key to the safe for the city of Houston. Because I don't know if you're strong enough to deal with the corruption that goes on in city government. So I might be just protecting you. You, you may feel like I'm trying to hinder you, you know, but I may just be unknowingly protecting you. And to have the attitudes of, of people to do what they did, you know? And now you go on your show and you, you apologize for what you say. My mama used to tell me, be careful what you say. Because you may have to say it twice. Don't say something if you can't say it twice because words are like bullets. Once you shoot them, you can't take them back. I don't care how you do it. Once you shoot them, you can't take it back. So for you Christians out there, according to your Bible, whatever come out your mouth, you meant it at the time you did it. When you said it, you meant it. So you can apologize all day, but you can't take those bullets back once you shoot them out. And I think this is a major problem. In, 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 in black America. Because you have these people who have these platforms, who have thousands of people watching them. And then you realistically do not want to hold people accountable. You're doing this for likes. You're doing this to look like you, you're really doing something. But in all actuality, you setting us back. And, you know, California, you can speak on that, but in the city of Houston, the African American politician is a joke at this moment. The corruption, as you've heard from watching us, is through the roof. It's through the roof. So if we gonna come out here and step out here and jump off this porch and do what we do, then we gotta be 100 with it. We gotta be 100 with it. I don't know what the hell went on. I don't really care. Because I know for a fact, I ain't took no money from nobody.
Right.
I don't care what nobody tell me. I ain't took no money from nobody. And I'll tell you about it, man. Come on, man. I, I can go outside and I can jump into black on black 300. I can recline back. I can go right now anywhere I want to eat. Money ain't my problem. And money ain't gonna become a problem for this black man. It's not gonna become a problem because you can't buy me. You can't buy me. I want what I want for my neighborhoods and that's all it boils down to. If you want me off your back, don't send your folk looking for me. Don't get out here and lie on me. If you want me off your back, do your job. That's all it boils down to. But if you a sellout to the community and you're not doing the right things, I will put my foot in your behind sideways. And that's all it boils down to. But I don't like the Jangos. I don't like the Stevens from Django that sit amongst us. And act like they're really in this to educate the people and to help the people. But you can be bought out at the drop of a dime.
That's what I'm saying. Um, one point, a lot of politicians, black politicians, they don't want to mess with the gravy train. They're being paid, you know, I might tell people all the time to look up the big six. Malcolm X talked about that a lot and how the big six was comprised of, uh, Martin Luther King, John Lewis. Um, and, uh, a couple of, four other gentlemen, I state, their names escape me. But, um, it was said that, uh, John F. Kennedy, their administration paid them, um, and this was in the sixties, about 1.3, 1.5 million dollars during that time to go back into the communities and to keep black people docile. So basically tell them, yeah, you know, we're gonna still fight for civil rights, but don't shake it up too much. Because, uh, they, they being, uh, the, uh, government had gotten word that black activists, if you will, were going to really turn up by, um, lying down on, um, LaGuardia Airport tarmac. So planes couldn't land. They were really going to do some disruptive things. So they were paid to go back into the community and say, hey, we're gonna get changed, but let's do it peacefully. Let's turn the other cheek. And so nothing's really changed. And even in 2020, we have a lot of black leadership, which is why, you know, they, um, keep, they say they're gonna do stuff for us, but they don't. But deep down inside, like people get into politics for a few reasons, power, prestige and money. And most people get in, I mean, look at the, the, just look at the, what people make before they get into politics. Most of these politicians, you'll find that maybe their house was getting ready to get foreclosed on, uh, they were driving a bucket. You know, their, their, their finances were in shambles, shambles. And then look a couple of years up the road and see how far they've progressed financially. You, I mean, we know how much most city council members make out here. It's about a thousand dollars paying and a thousand dollars for car. And you know, some other stuff. It comes about $2,000 depending on what city you're in. So how is it that they're making, let's say $2,000 and then years down the road, they're like bawling out of control? You think they getting that money? Or I'm not asking you because you know. But they're not getting that money, um, from being a city council person. They're getting that money because they're doing backroom deals and they're keeping the community docile and that kind of stuff. And so a lot of times when you see black leaders and even not even black leaders, but people in black media, they don't want to mess up their gravy train. So, so I'm not saying they did, but it's plausible. Somebody slipped them some money or something for them to turn the way they did on you. Because I was, you know, I've seen a lot of things, but I was really blown away. But I'm not surprised because like I said, people are not going to mess up their money at the end of the day. A lot of black leaders eat off, and I said this earlier, eat off of the desperation and the pain of black people. But the other problem is we as black people, let's say black voters, we don't believe we deserve better leadership. Because we keep allowing these leaders, leaders, and I say that loosely, let's call it misleadership. We allow them to come into our communities and our churches and, you know, and let's say a lot of times they're already in the community. They're gonna do this, they're gonna do that. And we believe them and we keep sending them up to the seat. And time after time, they prove that they're not gonna do anything. But so that's on us as voters. We have to believe we deserve leaders that don't have three felonies. Or, you know, because nobody's perfect. You know, because as I always say, if we judge people, Malcolm X wouldn't have been where he was because he was a low down, rotten individual before he became Malcolm X. So I'm not saying people aren't worthy of redemption. But to your point, if we're talking about sending people in, uh, uh, positions of power, she's got this per your testimony, three felonies dealing with money, why would you give her the keys to the vault? It doesn't make any sense. Like there's nobody else out there who has, um, less issues that could do the job just as good. And to your point, because you know, I, um, also have a, uh, background in finance. When you go work for a bank, which I used to be a personal banker and I used to sell life insurance, you have to have a credit check. You know why? Because if your credit is bad, you're more than likely, and I said you will, but you're more than likely to go do some chicanery at the bank because you're not good with managing your own finances. So there's a risk. So when you get those type of jobs, they run a credit check on you to make sure, you know, you're, you're above the level and you don't get tempted, if you will. So that's what I see. I just think we as black people need to feel like we deserve better leadership.
Wow. You, you hit the nail on the head. Uh, I, I see it every day. I, I seen these people come at me with money. And they couldn't give me with the money. They couldn't give me with the women. And like I told them, it's easy, man. Just fix the problem. Just fix the problem. And as far as our black leadership, if you don't want the community to know, and I'm not gonna speak on Cynthia Bailey. Any politician that has a reckless pass, a criminal reckless pass. If you don't want to know about it, then don't complain about your conditions when they get in office. Stop acting like you're concerned about your conditions that you live in on a daily. When you keep putting crooks in office. See me, I don't want no city contracts. I don't, I don't need that. I don't want to get in bed with the, with what I call the enemy. I don't, I don't want to be beholden to you. And that way I can't speak up for my hood. You know, we know the game and I always tell them, man, I ran little league football team. Them boys steal so much money. Youth sports is unreal. They steal money. It don't cost $300 for your child to play no football. It don't. I ran my team for $40 a kid and would take them all over the country. Don't, don't cost that much. But what I mean by that is I used to tell them, look, I'm not gonna tell you to steal no money. But I will give you some advice. As long as you take care of your kids, ain't nobody gonna question your money. So if you're a politician, as long as you taking care of your communities, you're less likely to be questioned. The reason you're being questioned is because our streets are torn. Crime is through the roof. Our schools are failing. You have police brutality. So you feel like we should not question you. No, you will be questioned. You will be questioned. So the thing is, the problem with us is when we speak of brother, brother Malcolm, stop acting like you know the history of Malcolm or you know the things that he said. Because if you understood it, you wouldn't do half the stuff that you do. When I don't, I don't really know Malcolm. Well, you ain't listening to Farrakhan. You have black leadership and you refuse to listen to them, but you listen to them black leaders downtown who robbing us blind. So you don't want us to, to talk about black Democrats. You don't want that. Because you black Democrats right now in California and in Houston would go hide up under rocks. Because we figured you out. So what you do is the voice, the voice, which is us, these platforms that we have. You try to find a way to suppress it. See, when you close to your victories, I ain't no super Christian. I'm a center in training. When you close to your victory, the devil attacks. That three man monster we had was what it was supposed to be. And somebody let the devil creep through the front door. Because we not supposed to talk about Cynthia Bailey. Why? You're not supposed to talk about Sylvester Turner. Why? Tasha Jackson. Why? Jerry Davis. Why? I tell you what, what we gonna do. Look, man, I'mma slip you a couple hundred dollars, man. Just let that go, man. You take that $200 and stick it up your ass. Because I would get more satisfaction exposing you than ever spending your money. Than ever spending your money. You know, you, you, you can compare. I know what I deal with here. How is the corruption in city government where you are? Is, is it apparent? Is it, does it even exist?
Exist at different levels. Um, in the city, I have a whole lot of corruption. We have our, but you know, just thinking of, you know, someone like a Maxine Waters, for example. Everybody knows who Maxine Waters is. She's always reclaiming her time and, you know, sticking it to Trump verbally anyway. But if you look at her district with the South Central Los Angeles, it's one of the worst districts in the country. You know, but the, I always ask, why do we as black people continue to elect those people, right? And I, the, I think part of the answer is because we as black people, we are hooked onto symbolism and symbolism only. We're not really interested, like we say we are, but your actions speak louder than words. We're not really interested in result. We like to feel good. I mean, how many times have you heard people running around in person and on social media, oh, I'm reclaiming my time. Well, you know, I've seen Auntie Maxine, don't pay that. Well, what did her reclaiming her time do for us? You know?
Exactly.
Maxine Waters, she, she'll talk about reparations when she asked. You know, she, I'mma go there. I'mma make sure, yeah, you know, black people deserve reparations. And that's the last you hear of it. You know, and so the other thing, um, as far as black leaders, well, for one, um, and a lot of leaders sell out, but we're talking about black leaders. Uh, for one, they take the money. And for two, if they actually start solving problems, then they don't get to put the cape on because they know we as black people, we are, like I said, we're hooked into, uh, we're, we're hooked on symbolism. If it looks good, cosmetically it appeals to us. And we like all those sound bites and the quick talking and stuff. But then once you turn the TV off and you walk outside and you see your neighborhood, like you said, the road's bad. You know, crime is high. There's garbage everywhere. It's like, well, where did all this symbolism really get me? It didn't get me anything, you know? So that's why I keep saying, we gotta believe as black people, we deserve better because we can continue to point the finger at leadership, but they didn't get there by themselves. And a person like you would probably, it'd be, it'd probably be very hard for you to get on a scene anywhere. Because like you said, you can't be bought. And we know that a lot of these political machines, and that's what they are. These machines are funded by big money. The big money is never really the black people. We know it's, you know, probably the white guy with the big giant pocketbook. I mean, look at every black organization, whether it's Black Lives Matter, the NDLACP, they're all funded by white people. And so they're not gonna get black people in there to, you know, like a Malcolm X or, you know, Dr. Monroe. They're not gonna get people like that in there because they know you guys are really interested in change. You're not interested in the change that's gonna go in your pocket. You're interested in actually helping the people. And so that's, that's not, you know, that's not what those type of politicians are there for. They really don't, because come on, if they really wanted to help people, we wouldn't have these problems we have. It's all about money and enrichment, you know, power, which is why you see a lot of our black neighborhoods. California, we don't have hardly any black neighborhoods anymore. They're all gone. They've been gentrified. So, and you know, Maxine Waters district, gentrified. She's supposed to be there for the people. Black people get her there and look what she does to them. She lets the neighborhoods get gentrified. You know, they put that big giant stadium in her district, um, where I think the Rams is the Rams. So one of those teams are not in the football, gonna be playing. And a lot of those, um, residents who are black, rent went up, you know, doubled and tripled to the point that they had to leave. So really for the people, why, why are her people struggling that bad?
Well, let me, let me show you an example of what I call crabs in a barrel. When it comes down to this. All right. I got people texting me as we're talking. And this is what the text says. Where is the charter university? And this isn't accredited school. I don't know what that means. Why is Elvante steady saying you were given money to drag people like Bailey, Ellis and Bonton? He's trying to say all you do is get paid by people. Let me explain something to y'all. I didn't get paid by Elvante. But I stood at the voting polls for him.
But can I stop? Because I don't, I don't, I don't think you need to explain that. Because what did get paid? Is it?
No, well, well, first of all, let's get something straight. I do political consulting. So exactly, if you're running a campaign and you want me to work for you, then I will get paid. That is nothing that I hide. I'm not going to work for free.
But are you telling the truth or are you lying? That, I think that's
I, I, I didn't, I didn't understand you.
I'm saying, are you telling the truth or are you lying? Because I think that's what's important. Whether you were getting paid or not, that's not an issue. But were you telling the truth about her?
Actually, I was telling the whole truth. I had the whole criminal file. Actually, I was telling the whole truth. I had the whole criminal file, one hundred, one hundred pages. But I didn't get paid to unleash the file. I unleashed it because I figured out that it involved misappropriating two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. From a school district that ended up closing down. And that's why I unleashed it. But what's so ironic is if I was this type of person. That all I do is get paid. I got paid to attack Richard Bonton. When did I attack him? I didn't call Mr. Bonton. The co-host called. I didn't call him. I didn't call Mr. Dutton. The co-host called. I didn't bring up Cynthia Bailey. Elvante brought up. But I think, you know, when you put yourself in a bind, you gotta get out there and you gotta test people's character. But if I was that type of guy, then why didn't you address it with me? Or even, why did you come on the show with me? Why would you be in my company? You know, it's a lie. See, this is to me right now, and I'm gonna say it, those two people, Jangos, got paid. Got paid. I'm just being honest with you. But here's my thing. I'm saying that out of anger. But if you told me to prove it, I couldn't. So if you're gonna say this about me, then I'll put my whole reputation on the line. Pay, prove it. Prove I got paid. Or you just on some dummy shit for the people that you're trying to protect now. And see, that's what we're good at doing. We're good at making sure that the wrong people continue to get in office.
Right. Um, I'm not sure what that is. Uh, but again, like, you know, I work for myself. I don't have a problem with people who are doing the work getting paid. I know you didn't get paid, but I'm saying even if you did get paid, what is the problem with that?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, cause I wanna show you something. I'm not nowhere near here, right? I don't mess with Cash App because it takes your money. How much they need to pay me? How much they need to pay me? They paid me? Motherfucker, I've been paid. And I ain't finna sell out my community for no crumbs.
Okay, but is it really selling the community out? If you were giving information that the community needed to hear, that was a need to know stuff.
It's, it's a whole bunch of need to know stuff that I'm actually sitting on.
So how is that selling out?
To me, because you gotta understand what that community went through. We, we, see, me and you, we get it. If a school or a school district closes, you might as well close the neighborhood. Cause the neighborhood is done. The school is the foundation of the neighborhood. So now we're talking about a community in two thousand twenty where the crime rate is fifty-four percent higher than the national average. Nothing but murder and mayhem. That's it. It only, on, on a good day, you could find somebody, body hanging out the dumpster. So now, all I'm saying is if you wanna be a public official, I don't need to know all the good stuff you've done. Why is it that we can hold Joe Biden to a certain standard? Because of his past with mass incarceration, but we can't hold the black elected official to their past. Why is it that we can hold Kamala Harris to her past? But we can't hold the black elected official in Houston to their past. Y'all know full fact, whether it's in California or Houston, these people robbing us blind. They ain't do, I mean, if you go that side of town, it's, there's a, it's a food desert. It's no grocery stores. Nothing. So now you wanna put somebody in office. And, and, and I can't wait until tomorrow. Something's gonna happen in the morning. And then that's gonna show y'all, cause I'm, when it happens, I'mma make sure everybody sees it. Then you tell me. Maybe Monroe ain't the one that's getting paid, but I know everybody else is. And because of confidentiality, I can't say nothing right now. But if you, let's not even discuss your past. In the morning, explain yourself, cause I'm talking about your presence. So if you still doing dirty stuff till this day, and we give you the key to the city vault?
Well, this is. Why are people more mad at you for exposing, I guess, the truth? When they are in her, for actually doing the things, and I know people, you know, pay, do their time and all of that. But it doesn't sound like she was totally forthcoming, you know, with all that she did. So why are they more mad at you than they're mad at her? Cause if she gets on the seat, you're actually gonna have more power to affect, uh, affect their lives directly. So why wouldn't you as a community idiot, I'm speaking, you know, you as far as us, why, um, wouldn't we wanna know all there is to know? Why do we always get sucker punched? The people get on the seat. And then we start finding things out and then it's too late at that point. You gotta do a recall. A recall is very expensive. And by the time you do that, you know, it's all time to be reelected again. So it's a nightmare. So why not know everything? You know, going, um, in, like I said too, as far as us in the black community, a lot of times we are reactive instead of proactive. We're always on the back end of stuff instead of being on the front end. Let's get, I always ask people I work with as far as, um, in public relations. Tell me everything there is to know. So like, whoever these corrupt politicians are. The, the people that's working with them, the campaign managers, you know, public relation people, perhaps they're not asking them. Is there anything I should know about you that I'm gonna have to, um, have you help walk back if it becomes public knowledge? Now, you know, for the candidate Ms. Bailey who's running, I guess, it sounds like maybe she tried to tell what was going on, but she didn't tell the whole story. And so, yeah, people like yourself are like, okay, wait a minute. That's interesting. Let me see what else there is to know, because the average voter, let's be honest, not very savvy. We go with the name we know, or you know, they talking a good game, they sound good, you know, they, I mean, I've even heard people say, black women say, oh, Joe Biden is fine. That's why I vote for him. So that kinda stuff is silly, that sounds. We go on that kinda stuff opposed to, you know, the real stuff that counts. And another thing, another point you made as far as, um, you know, food deserts and stuff in our communities. I always say, you know how your city council feels about you by the stump they allow to grow up in your neighborhood. So in our neighborhoods, what do we have? We have pawn shops, we have weed shops, we got liquor stores, we got, you know. All the Negro stuff. We got all of that in our neighborhoods. And so that's how they feel about us. And for one thing, we don't really go overall and show up to these city council meetings and say, no, we got enough weed shops, thank you. Put that in the white neighborhoods, cause they can, you know, if there's some more weed shops that need to go up, let them have one. We don't need twenty on one block.
You, you know what I find strange about all this? You just asked a question. Why are they so mad at me? Why would those two people be upset with me? When they got the same file I got, cause I sent it to one and they sent it to the other. You saw the file before we went on now. You know the truth. So what stopped you from speaking the truth? You saw the file, but prior to that, we were holding everybody's feet to the file. You watched it. Everybody, oh, stolen art, diamonds in the art, all this foolishness. But I send you the file. And now, you wanna turn a blind eye. Does the community need to know? Yeah, because I think that the community doesn't know. And I think a lot of people in the community actually forgot. So they need to know. But, you know, I, I, I'm just, I'm just amazed at you being upset with me, which I, I have a clean background. But you look at somebody who has. Three felonies. And you don't have a problem giving them the key to the vault. But before all of that, before we got into it on the air. Both people saw the file, a hundred page long. The file is what it is. I didn't need an investigator, is public record. Nobody had to pay me, is public record. So why did you turn your back on being the people that you said you were gonna be? Which I'm the accountability chair. We're gonna hold people accountable. But now you wanna turn your back and you wanna make me the bad guy. Oh, I don't like Monroe. Well, guess what? Get in line and stretch around the corner.
The other point you gotta ask yourself, cause from what I understand, neither one of them knew Ms. Bailey either, right? So they said, so gotta be something else in it for them. I don't, it's not like, I know you was like, you're not my friend. So it's not like I should have a hard time speaking the truth because we're not friends. I don't know you, so. Why the sharp three sixty all of a sudden? I mean, you would think you were the one with the three felonies. And, you know, trying to hoodwink the people, the way everybody, well, not everybody, but the people who were on your team, uh, turned on you. So if they don't know each other, it makes you wonder what's in it for them to do. Like they're now her mouthpiece. It's gone from, well, we're not saying nothing about her, you know, we just.
Well, you know what? They're a mouthpiece for several entities now. On their show right now is the president of the NAACP in Beaumont, Texas. Hold on a second, man. The Golden Triangle, where the Klan run everything? Where was the NAACP in Beaumont when the, the state of Texas took over the school district? Where was the NAACP in Beaumont when, when James Byrd got dragged behind a truck in Jasper, Texas? Where was the NAACP in Beaumont when multiple black people were beaten unmercifully? Just last year by the local police department. If these the type of people that you're gonna bring on a show. And you wanna give them a platform and you wanna glorify them. Now you can understand why we suffer. I don't, I'd rather have you, I'm having a ball with you, the people are loving you. We don't have to have a guest every night, but we got one tonight. This is a politician. And she pushed back because she was, she had a family function, but she keep texting me. This is a politician that if you don't have enough money, if she's a dentist, she gonna show you some love. This is a politician that feeds people every single day during this pandemic, you know, with, with local chefs that she hooked up with. This is a politician that, that's brand new to sit at all, but yet fighting them tooth and nail. That's the type of folk I want on my show. I don't want somebody here that, that looked a part. But you ain't doing nothing. So you know what? I really want them to be mad at me. And I get it. I'm a rock star doing this stuff. I'm a rock star. But see, I'd rather have somebody sitting next to me like you, that can tell me when I'm wrong. That will check me if I'm out of pocket. I don't want somebody sitting next to me. That can be bought with a twenty dollar bill. But if I could be bought so well, Elvante Patton, why you didn't have to pay me when you ran? Cause you were my friend and I got out there and passed them cards out for free. But you know what? That's how it normally go down. I get it. You was a sucker and I just didn't see it. Trying to show you some love. But I can make you a promise. If you ever run for public office in my district again, we gonna kick your ass. I don't care who runs against you. You will never take office in my district ever again. Won't happen. You can't start one way. The way you start is the way you gonna finish. So if you start one way, you're gonna finish that way. We said, hold them accountable. Do what we need to do. But see, I don't get, like I say, I see, I watch your podcast, I watch your shows. You're not playing. We ain't only trying to get no likes. We only are making a difference. You see what I'm saying? But you know, another thing, I don't need to be fucking with them youngsters. They don't have, and you know what's so real? Is I went to him like a true friend and told him one day. Look, dog, you don't need to be running with me on this stuff here, man. Not if you wanna be a politician, bro. Cause you gonna have to get money from these people. Look, pimp, I can walk away from this. Y'all can do this here. His exact words. I'm my own man and I'ma stand in my truth. Okay, well, I'm telling you, we don't have to do this. But now that you gone, you playing a sucker role to try to build your platform? That's not gonna happen, bro. What you've done is exposed yourself to these people for who you truly are. And you are the epitome of a sellout. And honestly, he would have been the dude in the woods, in the dark, where Harriet Tubman would have shot in the forehead.
Um, yeah, a, and I think really, you just answered the question. You know, cause I think just listening to you and i- i- it became, um, I don't say obvious, but it dawned on me maybe. He thought it was something he wanted to do, um, get on a platform with you. And you know, you're a very explosive individual, you know? That was the arena he wanted to be in, but then maybe dawned on him, like, wait a minute. Now I'm gonna stop my bag because the people I depend on, and that's what I tell people all the time, doing what you and I do. And you gotta make sure you, you are able to feed yourself. Because the establishment, if you will, they're not going to write you a check.
No.
They don't want doing what we're doing. And so perhaps it dawned on him, like, wow, I'm stopping my money. You know, I'm sure maybe he's gotten some phone calls and texts, has like, hey, do you really wanna do this? Be interested in running again? You gonna, you know, piss off the donors and all that other stuff and, you know? Maybe he thought about it. I'm not mad. I, I'm thinking anybody should be mad, but I don't think he should try to make you the bad guy. I think people should own their stuff. Own their stuff. If it wasn't for you, just saying, you know, this is, I thought I was gonna be able to do it. I'm not gonna be able to do it. I'm better off on the other side of the fence, you know, doing what I do best with those people.
I wanna, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna expose him to the fullest. Now, remember Sunday night, I was supposed to bring the young lady on that was the mysterious candidate, right? Okay, I'm supposed to bring her on at six o'clock that night. And I get a text at five fifteen, five thirteen, I'm reading from my phone, y'all. And I'mma show you if I can, okay, this is the Texas that we were getting. And as you can see, he tells me I'm not gonna be able to be on at six o'clock, spending time with his family. That's because he controlled the Zoom. So I didn't control the Zoom. He paid for Zoom. And I paid for yard string. So I tell him, can you have the Bailey documents ready for seven? Remember I told y'all he had the file? Especially the plea agreement, that one is closer to the bottom, that, and, and it has details. How it actually went down. Dog, are you gonna be able, are we gonna be able to use the Zoom? You control that. At least get me in the room. Because I couldn't get in the room, because I don't know how to do Zoom. His exact words to me was okay. Okay, I text him back. Are you coming in at seven? Hey, man, hold on with the wife and kids at the moment. With the wife and kids at the moment. I told him the code is not working. He say, I don't know what's up with that. I'll be home in a few. And then I text him at, at five fifty-one, can't get into the room, I'm nine minutes out. You may have to use your platform. Negro, you knew you had already changed the code. You knew you were gonna do another show that night. So once I did the video today, he called me. I'm just trying to man up. You can't be a man with a skirt on. I say, you knew you locked me out that room that night. So I had to go back and double back and do yard stream because he changed the code for me to get in. I'm nine minutes out. You started telling me you gonna get me in. So between five fifty one and six o'clock. You had to have talked to Cynthia Bailey, huh? Because it's not making sense. You started saying you rocking with me at five fifty one, but the whole time you gonna do a show. See, but I'm the like. I'm the one. See, what I don't do, and I I recommend all y'all out there do that, don't never erase them Texas in the meme. Cause they will cross theyself every single time. Every single time. So no, I didn't cross you, my brother. I'm still the same dude that stood out there in that goddamn heat for you. Trying to help you get in office, but negro, you don't need to be nowhere. Cause if you shy and ain't in office. You gonna be garbage when you get in there too. So guess what they were trying to do? Because ain't none of y'all heard me. If you can sidetrack me with this interview. Remember who I said? They said just now that I attacked Ellis, Bonton and Bailey. But I'm going on to do an interview with the missing candidate from the Bonton race with Dutton and Jared Davis. And you locked me out the Zoom to sidetrack that interview so I could never do it. We gonna stop talking about this. My guest finna pop in. Let's get her in here. We'll come back. Man, let me tell y'all something, man. I was working at the voting polls one day and I seen this pretty lady walk up. And she shook my hand. And she say, I'm running for city council and I'm a tough cookie. What's your platform? She told me what her platform was. She say, I am going to work for the people. I can't be bought. And I say, all right, if you win. I wanna come see you the first weekend off. She had to go to a runoff. And she won. And in the first weekend off, as I received my invite. And I went and we sat down for a few minutes, we talked. You know, my issue was crime in the community. And uh, she made me a promise that I'm gonna address it. So if y'all don't know who this is, this is my council lady as well as my dentist. Dr. Letitia Plum. How you doing, sweetie?
I'm doing great, doing great. How are you?
I'm I'm good, I'm good. I love what you're doing. Um, you one of those politicians that I I love having on my show because you do the work. And uh, I want you to tell them exactly what you've been doing during this pandemic because they may be amazed.
Sure. So um, the first thing that I wanted to do was pull together a COVID recovery committee. Um, that would basically be um, a group of people from the private sector. So we're talking about every industry from medical to hospitality, um, to energy, I mean, every single entity, housing. Um, and then have those those people give information about what's going on within the community. To the uh, the committee, which are which would be members of all of the council. And we will come up with solutions and strategies to present to the mayor and the administration to make some decisions on how we deal with the fallout. Because what I'm finding is that we're having a lot of conversations about the healthcare piece, which is definitely important. But as a business owner and doctor, I understand that. We can really be focusing on one thing and then we're caught off guard once again when it comes to putting Houston back on its feet again. And so there are many people, especially in the medical, in the medical field and the uh, with, you know, with Texas Medical Center. Uh, Houston, you know, Houston's um, Health Department, Harris County's Health Department as well. They're really focusing on that piece of it, but I really wanted to make sure that we could um, survive this thing because that's gonna be a critical part of the process. Um, so we're building that committee. I'm I'm reaching out to multiple people within um, within city hall, city hall and the private sector. Uh, to ensure that we can put that committee together so when the mayor is ready to execute, we have everything in place, ready to go. Um, and the other thing I'm working on is uh, is feeding folks. So uh, I was able to team up with an owner of Seaside Lounge. He owns multiple clubs. And um, in the area and um, he's agreed to let us, he agreed to let us use his his restaurant or lounge rather. And I talked to a good friend, who's Chef Wendell, and he's helped me put some chefs together. So we are feeding folks, which I've I've turned to restauranteer now. So um, I've got multiple chefs. We've done a total of nine days. We've we fed almost a thousand people. Uh, in the last week, we are going through uh, the end of this week as well. And um, and actually we just got another pop-up kitchen that's going in on the north side tomorrow. Yeah, so it's been amazing. I've really been able to have one-on-one conversations with people that I just don't have jobs right now. And you know, a lot of us think that people being touched are people in lower income areas and that's not the case. It's middle income folks with families and um, and jobs and health insurance, you know, and people that are really been affected right now. And so. What I wanted to make sure we did was we didn't forget the people in that gap. And so we're support, and then our seniors. And so we're we're supporting anyone that's unemployed right now. And um, and our seniors, so we're feeding them a hot meal every day, uh, cooked by a top chef in the city. And I've had a great time. It's been really amazing that um, the restaurant industry is obviously struggling right now. I think we're upwards of sixty thousand people. That are unemployed in that industry. And so my goal was to bring chefs, to give them some way to kind of give back to communities. Feed the people that need a really great yummy hot meal, uh, help given up, you know, give people in the city an opportunity to volunteer. And um, and just do some really good work. So that's what we've been up to um, for the past, you know, couple of weeks now. And um, and we're gonna keep this thing going. It's all individually funded, so it's it's private folks that are giving, they're making donations. And uh, it costs for us four dollars a day because the chefs are not charging us anything. And um, it's it's costing us um, about four dollars a day to feed folks. So. This is the deal. Everyone has to do their part. Um, what we find is their needs across the board, you know? And we will, we'll have these conversations. There are needs everywhere. Um, what I find is find your niche, find the good that you're able to do in that space, make a difference in whatever you're doing. And um, and just do your best work. And there's no judgment here. Um, there's just, if if everyone does their part, we're gonna get through this thing together. So those are the two top issues I'm do, I'm dealing with right now.
Okay, well, let me ask you a question. Something's very concerning to me because. You know, I deal with a lot of poor neighborhoods and and I think we have great advocate for the middle class as well as the affluent neighborhoods. I'm mostly in the poor neighborhoods. I know we're doing freeway expansion. That thing is going in and you're very, very passionate about the homeless. And uh, can you tell us, you know, where are you? With the freeway expansion that would really kind of wipe out? Sections of poor neighborhoods. You know, where where are you on that?
So as you know, I've been, I've been loud and clear about this. As a matter of fact, my first community uh, town hall was um. Fighting against I forty-five expansion and you know, historically, and you can look, I mean, literally in history, it tells a story. Um, most of these freeways or expansions come through areas that are poor. And and why is that? The question's always, what's the question on that? One, um, we're just, we're, the disparities there, we're disadvantaged. So we don't typically have the voice or the money to hire attorneys and to bring a lot of focus in those communities. So that that, so areas that are affected the most are always poor communities. Um, we're talking about communities, the first African-American, you know, community uh, in 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 Houston. Uh, independentites. I mean, it's a problem. So we're talking about losing thousands and thousands of homes. We're talking about losing thousands of small businesses. We're not, and that part is a different conversation, but then you talk about the health disparities. That we're doing, we're talking about putting freeways on the fences of elementary schools. Where low income people, uh, black and brown people, uh, primarily blacks, um, have the highest risk of asthma. And they're talking about putting filters in schools to make sure that the the pollution doesn't affect the schools. Ridiculous. I mean, our children have to play outside. Are we now gonna confine them to a space because we want to put a freeway to get people from the suburbs into the city? Absolutely not. So, you know, I'm fighting on this deal. Um, there's a really great group. There are multiple coalitions that are supporting this. Uh, Airlines and Link Houston are two groups that are funded um, by grants. And they've got some good people that lead them and they're really feeding me and giving me information based on on science. This is not an emotional conversation, although it's emotional for me, but I'm being driven by the science part of it. And if we're talking about creating clusters and complete communities and making sure transportation is accessible for those particular areas. That we have to make sure we look at that and walk the walk. We cannot let Tech Dot come in and dictate what our plans are and how we want to create a Houston. That will be able to uh, be available for our young people. I mean, I wanna create a city just like all of you that want our children to stay here. And putting more cars on the road and expanding a freeway system twenty uh, twenty lanes wide. And tearing down, it's ridiculous. It doesn't, it doesn't match up to what.
That freeway, that particular section of freeway is not crowded. It it it, you can get through there. I mean, I've driven all them freeways.
Yeah, it's it's forty-five. I mean, clearly there is a cluster of area. We have the piece, the pier is elevated all the way up going forty-five. I mean, it is definitely a crowded space, but we have other ways of doing that. In my mind, let's slow the traffic down. All those restaurants and all those, you know, um. Uh, taquerias and restaurants are on that forty-five expansion. Let's slow that down. Maybe put a boulevard there. To where people can actually shop and support those areas and not just zoom past them. And remember, this freeway is not for people in the inner city. This freeway is for people in the suburbs to get to the inner city. And and allow the growth that we're gonna be experiencing. I get that the city of Houston's gonna grow, but what about the people that live here right now? What about the people that have contributed? And made this city what it is right now? What about those folks? Um, generational families that have owned homes for generations. How do we tear those homes down? Um, and so I'm very passionate about this conversation because of COVID. You know, a lot of it has kind of been brushed away and people are not talking about it as much as we did before, but I'm still very engaged in the process. And um, and gonna continue to do the work to make sure if nothing else, our communities know what's going on. And let me tell you, and let me say this to to our, to our black people. It's time for us now, I'm giving you, I'm telling you, get on my shoulders. Like, let's push this through as a community. Because people in other communities are fighting for us and that's great. I mean, they they've got resources, they've got money and we need them to fight for us, but it's time for us to create that line, right? Um, to make sure that we're fighting for ourselves. So I'm wanting our communities to come together. We're gonna start some outreach. And we're gonna fight this thing to the end, but um. And I don't know, I don't know if we're gonna lose this thing or if we'll win this thing, but I tell you, they're gonna know that I was there.
Let me, let me say this, and this is the scary part. I think with the freeway expansion, we're gonna increase homelessness in Houston. I also feel that, and they do this all the time and it bothers me. That we create brand new suburban ghettos because these people are coming from the suburbs to get to the city. So you're gonna take the ones who've been displaced and create affordable housing out in the suburbs and now you create the new ghetto. And that is a problem for me.
Right, no, no, I could, this is like the key though, is that the ha, the money that Tech Dot is giving to the people to buy their property. Isn't anywhere close to be able to buy a home in in the burbs. They can't take that money and go to Pearland or Cypress or Ogle. You some, and then what you do is you're now tearing down communities, cause you know how we are. Grandmama's next door, auntie's down the street. So that infrastructure that we need to have for us to be able to thrive as a black community is gone. And so it's more than just a freeway. You know what I'm saying? It's destroying the inter, the inter networks of what we have as a culture. And that's where I'm fighting. I would, I don't know what I would do without my mom helping me raise my kids and my dad helping me raise my kids. But they were, they were five minutes from my home. And then you take our people and put them so far out there, they don't have any jobs. There's no transportation that goes out there because the burbs don't want metro. They don't want any public transportation there. So now how are they gonna come into work? When we're bus drivers and we're grocery store um, workers and we're um, hoteliers, the people that work in the hotel and in the hotel industries. Those kind of essential workers that we, how do we get into the city now to do the work that we do? So it's just a lot more than a freeway. And and that's the conversation that we have to continue to have. And I love your platform. I'm so grateful that you created this for us to get the word out.
Well, I tell you what, um. I I never have to worry about holding you accountable because you're accountable every day. To me, you're not a public, you're not, you're not a politician. You're a public servant. And when you become a public servant, you accomplish the goals, you you have, you care a little bit more. When I first sat down with you that day, when I, you gave me that that first week and we talked about decreasing the violence. I could see the passion in your eyes. I could hear it in your voice that you were very, very concerned. And I mean, just the other day, we lose a five-year-old kid.
Oh my gosh.
With with gun violence. And see, the thing is, is, you know, there are a lot of other passionate people on city council. That I like, this is one of the better city councils that I've liked in a long time. You know, Dr. Shabazz, my partner in crime and education, still call a bug, bug all day long. That's how I do. I mean, I I love y'all, the ones that work, you know, but we created this platform. As a means to be able to showcase. The elected officials that are actually doing the work. But at the same time, expose the ones that are not. So you know, if if that's what it is, then I'm sorry if you get exposed, but I don't have to worry about that. I think the city of Houston. Does not have to worry about that with you because you actually, I call it leaving it on the floor. And I don't know how you do it some days. You have multiple dentist offices. You popping up, you you, cause I mean, I drove in a couple of weeks ago in K T office. Working the dentist office, you popping your kitchens up, you still have to go to your meetings, you know, and and. This is what you want in an elected official, y'all. And more importantly, she has integrity. She she, you don't have to steal money when you got money. So we don't have to worry. Dimitri, you got a question for?
I actually, I'm just um, enjoying listening to her, cause like you said, it is really refreshing to uh, to um. Hear someone who was really truly doing the work. Cause you hear people give you a lot of lip service a lot, but just to see a politician and a black. Well, I wouldn't call you politician, but a black leader actually doing the work is, it's awesome, so. Now, I'm just listening.
And you know, and a lot of, I think a lot of our, you know, um, folks that are watching. You know, this is a very strong mayoral form of government in Houston. And so, you know, when you want to get something done. If it's not an agenda item, it's, you have to really fight. You have to really fight to get the conversation going. You've gotta fight. People um, to get them to understand what you wanna do and why you wanna do it. Um, but you know, I may not win all the time, but I promise you, before I say anything out loud, I'll always make sure I'm supportive factually. I always reach out to my community to make sure I'm on the right page. Um, I wanna hear from them because I'm not living every life. You know, I mean, I'm living my life, right? But I'm not living everyone else's life. And so. Hearing the stories, talking to people, even at my pop-up kitchen, talk, why are you here today? How did you hear about us? And they did hearing those stories. I think that's really a part that keeps me going. So. Um, I'm just doing the work for you guys, but without y'all kind of giving me that wing behind, the wind behind my wings, I really couldn't do this. Y'all kept me lifted and I'm, and I'm really grateful.
I'm gonna ask you one more question. You know, we got a very unique man as president. And his little brother is the governor of the state of Texas. Is the city of Houston in 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 your eyesight? Is the city of Houston ready to be open, reopen? With this pandemic going on, because I really don't think we're ready.
Right. So that's kind of the multifaceted questions. I'm gonna give you all the pieces of it. Um, as a public, as a doctor. Um, I understand um, viruses and how they spread and how easily they spread. And the fear of this virus is that it's asymptomatic, which means you don't have any symptoms for a very long time. That, that is devastatingly scary to me as a doctor because you can walk in a room and have the virus and spread it somewhere else. And we haven't really flattened the curve and we're not testing at the level that we need to test. We're not reporting at the level that we need to be reporting. Those are concerns for me. Um, and so are we ready? We're not reporting at the level that we need to be reporting. Those are concerns for me. Um, and so are we ready? No, I'm not sure if we're ready. Now, I'm gonna put my small business hat on. Okay, I'm giving you both sides. Um, dental offices aren't open, restaurants are not open, um, bars and clubs are not open. Um, those hotels are not open, right? Those are uh entities that funnel, funnel money and revenues into our city. Um, there has to be a balance between the two of them. But I will tell you this, if we're not healthy, there will be no one there to work those industries. So we need to be incredibly smart about how we reopen the city. It's got to be strategic. It's got to be calculated and we have to know exactly what we're dealing with and we have to plan for the next step. It cannot be just something we wake up in the morning and do. Um, and so I'm watching. I don't know if our governor is gonna do it the right way. I'm really hoping, um, you know, uh the mayor, I know that he is going to um hopefully make, you know, the best decisions that he can. But if I, if I see that things are happening too swiftly, I will definitely speak out about it. But are we ready right now? Absolutely not. Um, I'm a, I'm a doctor and I'm in my practice. I don't want anyone walking in my office infecting my whole entire staff. Uh, the risks of that is just, is, is um, is really scary. And so I feel like we need to be really calculated about how this is. But I'm very worried, guys, to be completely transparent, I'm very worried about if we're prepared at the end of this. What is, what is, what is opening the city of Houston look like? For multiple businesses that are now closed, for thousands upon thousands of people that don't have jobs, about thousands of people that are gonna be evicted from their apartments, thousands of people that lose their mortgages, people that are not shopping, so our sales taxes are dropping, property taxes are plummeting. Uh, because the, that's the fallout. And that's the part that we need to really be focusing on as well as how do we strategically open up our city? Did that answer your question?
Oh, yeah. Well, I tell you this, yeah, I'm really tough on elected officials and I think I'm one of the toughest, you know, people on the mayor. And for the last few days, I've kindly eased up off him.
Right.
Because I, I see him trying, but I also know that his hands are tied on a lot of things. I know a little bit more than the average person.
Right.
So I will, I will applaud him at this moment. I will applaud city council at this moment. You know, because this is tough, because when I look at the overall picture, we're dealing with the pandemic, but we're about to fall in the hurricane season.
Yeah, I know, I know. And we have.
And once we finish hurricane season, if they've not figured out the pandemic, I mean, you know, the, the, what's going on with the coronavirus, we fall right back in the flu season.
Right, exactly. We've gotta get some systems and put, you know, in a lot of ways, I feel like we as people don't necessarily use opportunities like this to be prepared for another, for other opportunities that are going to show up. So as we're taking, um, you know, this, you know, this break, so to speak, we need to be in rooms brainstorming and planning on what are our next steps gonna look like. And I'm eager to have those conversations with the mayor and with council because we're gonna have to survive this thing and um, you know, we're coming up on budget season. We don't know what the budget's gonna look like. Um, we have to make sure we take care of Houstonians. So, uh, yeah, the, the mayor is, I, I, I do believe, this is unchartered territory. So people are really kind of figuring things out as they go. And um, and, and I feel like this, though, has given us a glimpse now. We know what disaster, natural disaster looks like, right? Now we know what disease looks like. Uh, so now we've got enough on our plate to really be able to say, okay, we've gone through the, we've gone through a, a, um, you know, the crash during the oil bust, right? We've now gone through a pandemic. We've gone through the worst hurricane, hurricane season of our life during Harvey. Now let's start looking and pulling on what we didn't do, right, in those situations and building on um, what we know about it and come up with some plans of action. And that's what I'm really eager to learn, to start working on.
Well, I tell you, my sister, I appreciate everything you do. Uh, you're one of the very few city council people, well, one of the few candidates that ran and one that has truly stuck to their, their, their platform. You've stuck to every facet of your platform. And you know you have because I've not come in to city council and gut you yet. Because they know y'all. They know it. You ain't doing your job. I'm coming.
Hey, listen, I'm gonna work as, as long as I have breath, I'm gonna do my work. I promise. I, I need you to continue to hold me accountable. I really do.
I, I don't have to. I mean, you wake up every morning. See, you the type, you don't have to get ready because you stay ready.
Thank you.
You stay ready. So I mean, I applaud you and I applaud, you know, several of them up there that I like what I see so far. And I just think we got a lot to deal with, you know, but I'm gonna keep being tough.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Dimitri.
I have a question, uh, Ms. Plummer. So what do you think about when you see people um on social media in different neighborhoods? Not taking it seriously. So, um, I'm in California. We also have a stay-at-home order, if you will. It's not very strict. They're not gonna like do nothing to you if you don't stay home.
Right.
How do you feel when you see people who are out partying and just not taking it seriously?
Yeah, this is not a vacation. I mean, on any sense of the word. And I'm, I'm, and Dimitri, I'm so glad you brought that up. If you don't mind, guys, I'm gonna just touch on a couple of points and I've gotta close and I apologize for being tardy. Um, but we've lost two, two family members to COVID in the last two days. And um, this is very, very real. And so let me just, let me answer your question. I'm gonna touch on a couple more closing points. Um, the black community is touched by COVID more than any other community. We talk about that all the time. But we're also touched on so many other levels. I mean, if you all, if you notice, we're always being affected by everything. And there's some key issues on why that happens. Um, we are the higher rate of pre-existing conditions in healthcare. Huge disparities in healthcare, okay? We um, we live in black and our black communities are typically essential workers, which means we're in the transportation world, we're in the genital, genital world, we're driving cabs. I mean, we're in that, kind of that front line, um, that front row role, which always keeps us in front of other people, which makes it difficult for us to stay home. Um, so we have, you know, we um have the lowest amount of in, information that gets to us. A lot of communities don't have internet, don't have, you know, wifi. If you even, you've heard the mayor talk about of how our young people are trying to go to school right now and they don't have computers. So we don't have the level, the way to get the information directed to us um efficiently. And then finally, it's housing disparities. Affordable homes are difficult. We typically live in areas that are old abandoned buildings. In this particular disease, we're talking about asbestos and mold in a lot of these apartment complexes and affordable homes, um, which means that respiratory issues are higher, which means they're more susceptible to getting this particular disease. So Dimitri, because of those particular reasons, we as black people need to stay home.
Yes.
We have got to stay home. Because we, because of all those things I've listed, plus all the other gam, and we live in multi-generational households. So grandma and auntie are there. Then we got our grandbabies that are there too. You got four and five generations in one particular household because we don't, and, and we're living in, in a thousand square feet. So social distancing is not an option for us. Uh, we don't have seven bedrooms where everybody gets their own room or own suite in the house and a garage apartment and all that kind of stuff. We don't have those opportunities. So I'm asking people, please, because we are naturally disposed because of our situation, because of the disparities in our communities, we are most vulnerable. So I'm telling people, stay home. Please, let's get past this curve. We do not need to lose any more people to this pandemic. This is not a party. This is not a vacation. I'm talking to you as a doctor. This is not a, an event to where we get to, you know, have uh big parties and have family members over to the house and barbecue outside. There's a reason why there are ten, ten people in the household and there's a reason why we're talking about keeping people six feet apart. Um, so when I see those things happen to me, I'm annoyed. Um, but we have to also remember people just don't understand. And it's not at a fault of theirs necessarily. It's the lack of transfer of information um that is reputable and data-driven. It's, and, and, and until you see it happen in your life, uh, you don't really realize how real it is. And what's really sad about in our communities is was, we are so, we've lost so many people in crime and violence. The loss of life, we are desensitized in some ways. It doesn't touch us in the same way. And it doesn't mean we don't feel. It just means our experiences have us respond to things differently. And we need a break. We're tired. Most of us work three and four jobs. We're exhausted. And so getting a break and spending time with our families is something that we yearn for. And so there's so many reasons why it can be misconstrued as having some time off and a vacation, but that's not what this is. It's a virus that is rolling rampant through our communities. It attacks your respiratory system, which means you cannot breathe. The pain that has been described to me um in this pandemic is something that no one else has ever dealt with. Um, they're uncertain about the um, the, the medications. They don't know how people are responding to the medications. There's so many unknowns. So I'm asking people, stay home uh, and plan. Um, and my last piece, guys, is we don't plan and it's not because we don't want to. It's because we are busy trying to take care of our families. And so I want us to take a moment and plan. I want you to plan a room in your home. That could be a space where if someone gets sick in your household, you can individually quarantine them in that one corner. I want you to get some masks if you can. I want you to increase your um, your disinfection rate in your household. I know it's hard to get Lysol wipes, but like my daddy said, put a little bit of chlor, a cap of Clorox in some water and shake that, put it on a washcloth. You know what I'm saying? It doesn't take much.
I'm gonna leave you with this last statement.
Okay.
I always ask my elected officials, like Dwight Barkins would always say, even on the horseshoe. I never ask for anything for me. It's for my community. The north, northeast side of Houston is a food desert.
Yes.
I would love to have a conversation with all at-large because right now District B doesn't have a council. Well, they got Jerry. But we don't know what's going on with that. Jerry may leave any day once the election happens or whatever. But I would like for the at-large council members to sit down and look at the fact that that district, as well as that northeast side of Houston, they don't even have a decent grocery store. We, we gotta do something about the food desert out there. People keep saying, well, you gotta eat the right way. You gotta eat the right things.
Yes.
What they could eat.
Right.
I, I, I know that you'll look into it. I don't have to tell you nothing twice. But you think about it, that's not my side of town, but that's my people.
Right.
Doing something about that food desert over there.
Yeah, no, I've talked about that a lot. As, as a matter of fact, as one of the only candidates even brought the conversation up. Because you can't be healthy if you don't eat healthy and you can't be mad that someone isn't healthy when it's not available to them. And our smaller grocers, like our, our smaller grocers are paying higher number, higher um amounts of money to buy a cucumber or an apple than an HEB is because we're not able to buy it in bulk. And so one thing I really want to do is I don't want to lose our mom and pop grocers. So what I'm trying to do is create some collaborations between all of them to where they can buy in bulk and then they divide the produce up individually on. And that was something I was working on actually before this COVID thing happened. So I'm on it. Um, I'm on it. And um, and I'm gonna take care of it. And uh, anything you need from me, any of our, any of the folks watching, please let me know. I am at, at, my email address is atlarge, the number four, at houston tx.gov. Um, I know I'm a, I'm an at-large member, but I'm a big supporter of my district members. So if you do call me, I will work hand in hand with my district members to make sure we execute. And I'm, I always try to follow up uh, to make sure your needs are met. So thank you so much for having me on today. I appreciate it.
Before you go, I just, y'all need a dentist. She is the best in the city. Please give him a plug on the dentist side of you too.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I, I, I'll be back open again, but if you have any emergencies, just look me up.
Okay.
Thank y'all. I love you guys. Thank you so much.
All right.
See y'all later. Be safe. Okay, bye-bye.
That's, that's, that, that's a public servant. That is a true public servant, man. Not no faking, none of that. She leave it on the flow every day. So I, I appreciate her coming in. So uh, kind of back to where we were. Let me show you how childish some people are. You know, I'm saying, I, I stood out there for this boy, right? Let me show you how this sucker is. See the name? Cash out. So you paid me for standing at the polls. You just sent this to me. But you the dude that's getting a PhD. You the dude that wanna represent our communities. And in all actuality, dude, people always say, you'll show people who you really are. And as far as me being on a show with you guys, even Jesus had to deal with Judas. Even he had to deal with Judas. So go ahead. I, I see it's coming out your mouth.
Uh, you know, I'm just gonna say, cause you know, I know how it is. My mom used to always say, I don't know if you've ever heard this term, don't let them get you goat. You know, don't let them get you riled up. Um, and I would say from this point forward, let them do what they're doing, you know, because clearly they're paying attention to you, right? If you weren't doing the work, you weren't actually out there helping people, they wouldn't care. They know that you, you know, you have the power to make or break what they're doing. And I think the work that you are doing far outweighs the nonsense that they keep um bringing up. You know, him sending you that dollar was really him wanting your attention. In order, you know, it, it, you gotta starve the haters by removing your energy.
Well, you know, some, sometimes, you know, I just, I just think that he has bitch tendencies. So if you send me a dollar and you acting like a bitch, I'm gonna fuck you sooner or later.
You know what? Put that dollar in your pocket and keep on stepping.
I'm gonna keep the dollar. I don't care if they leave me ninety-two cent, I'm gonna keep the dollar. You seen it? I'm gonna keep the dollar, pardon me. But I, I had to dr, I had to get it off my chest, you know, because these people watch me and they hold me accountable. And nobody gets to test my character or my integrity because it's never in question. And, and at the end of the day, I'm not in competition with anybody doing this, you know, like look at her, she's, the, let me just know, if you ain't doing your job, I'm coming.
Right.
I would ask either one of them, when is the last time you spoke at city council? You know, are you, are you even trying to talk when you bringing on these people, putting on this showcase? Are you asking them to help get, get, get rid of the food desert in northeast Houston? It's about caring about your people. And you're right, I can't give energy to foolishness anymore. We got too much to do. We got too much to talk about. And it is what it is.
Speaks for itself. What, I, one thing I never do, I, I always tell this to people. Let the clowns entertain you. Don't entertain the clowns. That's out of order. Your record and your work speaks for itself. You're at a level now to where it's beneath you to even address the gestures. In a, in a, in a court with kings and queens, do you, you never see them going to the level of a gesture. That's beneath them. And that is beneath you. Let them go, you know, you know, entertain the low-hanging fruit and all the nonsense. But like you said, you know, you got a lot of work to do. The work you bar ring brunt speaks for itself. They don't deserve to have their names ever come out of your mouth again until they start doing the work and actually start helping the people. Because after a while, you do yourself a disservice by even mentioning their name. Take the dollar, put it in your pocket. But keep it moving, you know?
Well, I tell you this, that when I got rock stars watching me like Carol Mims Galloway, former board member, Houston Independent School District, uh, um, great lady stays on my behind about cursing. I did good tonight, Ms. Galloway. And uh, and um, maybe I think I've used two cuss words in over hours, so I did really great. When, when you're in the company of, of your former superintendent thirty-something years ago, thirty-four years ago, you know, Dr. Billy Reagan, who's a big fan of mine and tell me don't change anything. When, when, when one of your partners in crime behind the scenes was former governor Mark White. When you people wake up in the morning over there and you can do what I do, you will be relevant. If I die today or tomorrow, I'd have a hell of a funeral. Because it would be kids, it would be blacks, it would be whites, it would be Latinos. It would be everybody there to celebrate. The only man that had the guts to stand up to the whole damn to celebrate the only man that had the guts to stand up to the whole damn system. So good luck with your platform, good luck with your show, because we got work to do over here. And that's what it is, it ain't personal, homie, it's business. And it look like every time I get close to anybody in California, it just work out perfect. So y'all kick back, man, got something I gotta drop tomorrow night, might be hot. But tomorrow night, I want to see if Demetri won't talk about the, 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 the forbidden subject.
Uh-oh.
Cheating on your mate.
I'm here for it.
We're in tomorrow, man, we going in, man. Say, I appreciate you guys tuning in. You've been in the middle of the war zone with my good friend, Demetri Foulton. I am the five-star general, the OG of the game. Y'all know what time it is. We're gonna see you tomorrow night, get a seat, though. Would you cheat on your mate? Or did your mate cheat on you? We're gonna talk about it.